Good evening. It is 6:00 PM and I am calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for April 23rd, 2024. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
Have seven members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, presentations. Our first presentation is a department update from the Police Department, Chief Cristiani.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for giving me just a few minutes of our time tonight. I'll be brief. Okay, so let's talk about staffing. That's one of our most important things that we're always making sure we're staying on top of. We're currently rolling with 66 officers, that's me included. We're looking for two more positions so we can get to our fully staffed 68 number by the summertime, and then we'll be ready to go for the busy summer that we're expecting. As you know, we have our second dual-purpose K-9 officer that's in Pennsylvania right now. He's graduating this week, and he'll be bringing the dog back this weekend. After that, he'll then go to an FTO program with some Colorado Springs K-9 officers, and they're going to train together. So they'll be ready to go at the very beginning of the summer, and we're looking forward to having that second dog. And that's a dual-purpose dog, both drug and apprehension. We have one opening right now for Beacon. We're kind of going through some clinicians to get the right fit for Fountain. So we're, we have one clinician right now. So we're a little down on our Beacon numbers, but they're still very impressive, as you'll see in a, in a slide coming up here. We're still making lots of contacts with the Beacon unit. And again, for those that don't know, that's the Behavioral Health Connection where we have a clinician writing with an officer. So we have one right now, and the second one will be filled here probably in the next month. School resource is doing well. We have, getting ready for the graduation coming up here in May, so the officers there are getting ready for that. As you know, District 8 has been up at the state Capitol trying to get the concurrent jurisdiction, so we can then have five more, six total officers out at Fort Carson and occupying the Army schools out there, which is going to be a great resource for both the Army and Fountain. It'll be a great partnership that we have with those guys. I'm regularly speaking with, well, regularly, I was allowed to speak with the general ones, so pretty proud about that. Kind of cool. That's not regular, though. As you know, as part of the 2B initiative and the citizens voting for that, we promised an Internet Crimes Detective, which that detective has been in place now for about three months, and she's very busy. I briefed last time the operation that we had that netted quite a few important arrests, and we did one live operation, so we'll be looking to do another one of those coming up in the summer. We have one detective assigned to the U.S. Marshals. That's Detective Kleeb. He was a former DICE detective. He's been assigned out there full-time now, so the Marshals pay for all of his overtime. We, of course, pay his normal salary, but they pay all of his overtime, and they've actually prepaid that for the entire year. So they're fully, they're fully invested on Fountain officers working on the task force, and the benefit for the Marshals Task Force is pretty self-explanatory. It's a fugitive apprehension. They were instrumental in capturing our, our person yesterday, as far as that murder that took place a year ago. You probably all saw, if you didn't see, we released the fact that we made an arrest in that homicide yesterday. And we're very proud of the work that was done to get that accomplished, so some closure for the family is ultimately what we're looking for, so we're happy about that. I guess I'm in control of my own slides here. Oh, thanks, Chris. So a very interesting number. As you can see here, the crime has been reduced by 11.8% since 2021. I've put up there the numbers for the last three years, and the Part A offenses and Part B offenses. Part A offenses are, of course, the serious crimes that are reported to the FBI. Part B offenses is kind of your, your lower, your lower-grade offenses, but still something that we focus on in Fountain. So the 11.8% drop is very good. That kind of gets us back to the range we were at pre-COVID. So one would ask, you know, why do you have a, a 12% decrease? Well, it's region, pretty much statewide, and I would venture to say the country has seen a little bit of reduction in crime. But for this region, that's very consistent with what I've seen with other agencies. A lot has to do with COVID and social injustices that have been, I would just say, calmed down. I don't want to say resolved, but because things kind of calmed down around that, that's why we see a reduced in crime, and also we have more officers on the street because of the 2B we've added. We'll be adding six more officers, and they do have an impact. And so I think that plays an important role as well. There's a lot of factors in, in, in crime reduction, and, and we don't, we don't get too hung up on that, because we know I could, I could come back next year and have an increase, and everything would be awash, so. But we're proud of the numbers, and hopefully we had something to do with that with the officers we've put on the street. Here's the Beacon Connection Co-Responder Program numbers, December, December 1st through February of 2024. We provided on-scene support to 151 patients. Eighty-eight of those were treated with safety plans and provided with referrals for case management and other resources. And then 46 were transported for further evaluation or medical treatment, depending on the situation. So again, we haven't had two clinicians for about maybe four months or so, so we're a little light in the numbers, but still, I like the fact that 151 patients were seen, and I think only one of those was incarcerated for a crime that we had no choice on. 150 of them didn't see any jail time or didn't get arrested for anything, because there was more important things to handle at that time. So that's good. So coming up, we're going to have, focus on the summertime, of course. We have a revamped patrol schedule that we're, we just did the patrol picks, and so the officers got to pick their shifts. And what we did was, we created a third shift. Fountain has traditionally had two shifts, the Sunday-through-Wednesday shift and the Wednesday-through-Saturday shift. We've added a third shift. We didn't obviously add any more officers, but we took the officers and kind of split them up into three different shifts to get better coverage. For instance, on some days, right now, currently, we only have four officers covering all of day shift from 06:00 to, to 4:00 PM in the afternoon. This is going to fix that. This is going to give us six officers across the board. Yes, you'll have the four starting, but those four are only going to be working for a couple of hours by themselves, and then they'll get relief officers in to help them out. It's much better, much better coverage for the citizens, better call-for-service responses, and I think we'll get more done this way. So we've added, we've added that third shift. We're going to try it out for six months, and if we see any glaring issues, we'll obviously address those, but we've always been looking for different ways to train and different ways to spread out our officers based on the crime and based on where we need them during those hours, so this will help us do that. SROs, as you know, come out in the summertime, since they're full-time employees. They come out and work patrol in the summer, so they're going to be focused on traffic enforcement, nighttime patrols. But again, we're going to spread the SROs out throughout the entire day. There'll be some working night shift, some working the mid-shift, and some working the swing shift. So we're going to have 10 extra officers out there in the summertime. SROs also take this time to, to get trained up on theirs, take their vacations, so it won't be 10 officers every day, but the SROs help us out greatly during the summer with a lot of the kids that are out there running around. And that, you know, those SROs have a wealth of knowledge of what those kids are doing, and they really stay on top of it. You know, you, you say a kid's name, and one of our SROs knows them, knows their friends, and knows where they live, so it's very important for them to be out there in the summertime. Couple of highlights we're going to have during the summer at PPIR are usual events, but these are the, these are the big ones. May 25th, we have the Slush Motorsports Festival. That's going to draw anywhere between 7,000 and 8,500 folks, and those are numbers based off of last year and what they predicted on ticket sales and everything this year already. Of course, they're going to have the July 4th celebration through July 6th, the Ascend Music and Motorsports Festival. That draws a pretty good crowd, up to 10,000. I don't know what their number was last year, but they had a pretty good turnout. And then August 22nd through 25th, Hot Rod Rock and Rumble, that's 9,000-plus. We, of course, staff those with off-duty officers that PPIR either pays for, or we trade in the use of the land for the range that they've built for us. So while they may not pay us directly, it's a, it's a cost to be able to build that range out there, that shooting range, and we didn't have any taxpayers' dollars used to build that, so it's kind of a trade-off there. So I don't have anything else that I felt was super important for you guys to know. You know, normally I brief things every other week here, so if there's any other questions, that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. Are there any questions from any of the councilmembers in the room on the report? Are there any questions or comments from any councilmembers online, Councilmember Rick or Councilmember Hersberg? Just go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up, please.
Yes, this is Councilmember Rick. Chief, thank you for the report. The only thing I would ask is, we're still not getting the Beacon reports in our emails. If you could please forward those on to us, I would appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Councilman Rick. Yeah, you are correcting that. We're going to get that. I just spoke to my lieutenant today, and we're going to get that back online. There is two things that I forgot to brief on that I had written in my notes that are not on your slides, but I also think they're important. So far, year-to-date, we've had officers respond to just under 9,000 calls for service in only four months, so that's, in my mind, very busy, as we know, we're busy here in Fountain. And we have written so far 454 traffic summons. That's not including any of the other summons we write, but 454 traffic summons. So that's also something that we're focusing on is traffic enforcement in Fountain. We obviously don't have numbers that we force anybody to write, but those that ask for traffic enforcement to take place and to make sure we hold the drivers accountable that need to be held accountable, we do that. And that's just the only reason that I, that I mentioned that number. And that's the only other thing I wanted to add.
Okay. Councilmember Hersberg, did you have anything to ask?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. If I forget to do that, please remind me that they're online. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Chief Cristiani. Appreciate the update.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Takes us on to Small Business Week, and that is... Okay, you're pointing to someone else. Want both of you come down? All right. Kimberly Bailey, and then we have Small Business Development Center being represented by Lauren Sykes. Did I say that correctly?
Sheiks.
Sheik, okay. All right.
So we're here to present just a proclamation for Small Business Week. We've done this throughout our recent history of COVID, and it shifts every other year, kind of, as we're getting back into normalcy of programming. And so this year, the SBDC and the Better Business Bureau is co-hosting for, starting next Monday, so April 29th through May 3rd, I believe is correct, is hosting a series of events. Most of them are free for business engagement, and it's really important for us to acknowledge that economy in our city. And so Laura is here with us tonight, if you wanted to make any other comments regarding your programming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening. I stand before you enthusiastic to invite you to participate in our Small Business Week. As Kimberly mentioned, we are kicking off with our Small Business Awards Monday evening at Boot Barn Hall, and we welcome you to join us as we celebrate our small business champions in our community. The Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center covers all of El Paso and Teller County, and we certainly have several businesses from Fountain that will be represented. I invite you to participate in the rest of the week as well, and thank you for your time today in recognizing the role that our small businesses play, not only in our economy, but in here locally and across our nation. So thank you for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. And we have two proclamations for Small Business Week, one that was read into perpetuity in May of 2021, and so I wasn't going to read that one tonight. However, I would like to, hopefully with council's approval, at the end of both of the proclamations, it says, "Now therefore, I, Sharon Thompson, proclaim this." I would like to, with council's approval, take that to, "Now therefore, we, the City Council of Fountain, Colorado hereby proclaim these weeks." And I think there's more power in, in all of us proclaiming that, because we're all concerned. And with council's approval, I'd like to suggest those changes be made to those proclamations.
I approve of that.
Okay.
I approve, yeah.
So, so those will be done that way. And do we have any small, if we have any small business owners in the audience, would you please stand up, because I'd like to recognize you, because usually the only pat on the back is the one you give yourself, and of a small business owner, and so I'm going to rise with you. So if you're a small business owner or like we are, thank you very much, and we appreciate you doing business in the city of Fountain, and, and understand how hard y'all work, so thank you. All right. And with that recognition, I will go ahead and read this proclamation into the record, just the one for the Small Business Week, because they're both pretty long, so. Whereas the U.S. Small Business Administration sponsors National Small Business Week every year to recognize the contributions of entrepreneurs and small business owners, and whereas more than half of the people in the United States either own or work for a small business, and small businesses create nearly two out of every three new jobs each year, and whereas Small Business Week is a week meant to highlight the importance of entrepreneurs and small business owners throughout the city and nation, to encourage citizens and supporters to shop small at local businesses to bolster, bolster the local economy. And whereas the city of Fountain established the Economic Development Commission in 1987 with a mission to advocate on behalf of business operational needs in a corridor and/or identify hindrances to business entry for the community, as well as proposed solutions. And whereas the city of Fountain Economic Development Department promotes economic well-being and a visionary lead towards economic diversification, job growth and preservation, building the local tax base and equitable generation of wealth. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the city has provided over $154,800 in grant assistance to small businesses through the Business Impact Assistance Program. And whereas it's important to acknowledge the 160 local small businesses in the city which aid to foster our local economy, keep money close to home, and create meaningful jobs. And whereas, on behalf of small business resiliency, the city economic development activities in 2024 include hosting business visitations, outreach, and the inaugural business lecture series in tandem with our business agency partners. And whereas city leaders work closely with the county, state, federal, and national partners to help spur small business development to foster growth and to promote trade and commerce in the city of Fountain. And whereas the award-winning Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center and the Better Business Bureau of Southern Colorado will host a Small Business Week of activities to give small business owners an opportunity to learn more about successful practices and ways to help local business economies thrive. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Fountain, Colorado hereby proclaim the week of April 29th, May 3, as Small Business Week. And in perpetuity, in 2021, we declared Economic Development Week also. So thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, and spend your money local, right?
Thank you, and we're going to ask you for a quick photo op, so they can post this on their Facebook page and recognize Fountain for supporting small business. Would you be acceptable for that?
Absolutely.
You're just going to congregate up there with the logo behind you? I think would be great, and then Laura and I...
All right, Cole, you want to open the door there for him?
Any small businesses would like to stand with us tonight? You're welcome to be part of their photo op?
Or they just can stand down front?
Oh, yeah, they can just...
You're just so shy.
Do you need to move this chair all the way?
Or you can sit in it, and you can sit in, and we can stand around.
Ooh, all right, like you like. Oh, go ahead.
So I would just like to, she's, to think...
Kimberly, could you come back in? Kimberly? Councilmember Duncan wanted to say something.
Apologies, yes?
Oh, no problem. Thank you. I would just like to thank you and Laura for all the hard work that you've been doing. When the manager's report came out, I was glad to see that we had, that the city clerk renewed or had new 599 new small business licenses here in the city of Fountain, so I was glad to hear that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that acknowledgement. And just the discrepancy between the 160 in your proclamation and the 500 that you've accented here. So occupational licenses are required for any business that does business in the city, but those businesses that physically reside and have actually storefronts is the number that was quoted in the proclamation, so I just want to clarify that misnomer of numbers. But thank you, and I will share that along, and hopefully you can join them for a few of their offerings next week.
Yeah. I plan on being there. Thanks.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. There are none tonight. Item 5, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. I'm going to do in the room first, and then I will go to the councilmembers online. Councilmember Applegate?
Went to the recent Pike's Peak Regional Advisory Board, and like every summer, construction's picking up. It's going crazy. We're starting to, and the duplexes and the townhomes, we're starting to, they're planning, if the legislature ever, ever loosens the restrictions on that, there's a lot of plans in the works for, you know, we would see that more than, you know, we would see that along with the single homes as well, so.
Okay. All right. So that is, that Bill 106 that we're hoping will...
Yeah.
Right, right, right-to-re remedy bill. Okay, Councilmember Estes?
Just a good news on our sophomore project. We are on schedule to start this fall, and getting that, it will not fix the road, but it'll stabilize that bank so that we can move forward on that. So we're hoping to get that, moving forward. That should start back over November-ish.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
I just want to embarrass my son, so I just want to give a shout out to Class of 2024 and to the Fountain volleyball team. They are six in the state, and he plays on that team, and they're doing great, and they may have a chance to host a regional tournament here at the Sports Complex, so just a shout-out to them and a little bit of embarrassment to him, too, as well. So, thank you.
One of your last chances, huh?
It is my last chance to embarrass him, because he's my last one.
Counting the days?
Yes.
Till you're done with high, till you're done with high school? That's right. Councilmember Duncan?
Ditto to that on the Class of 24, as I have a graduating senior myself, and very excited about that. I'm getting nervous about it, but it's exciting. On that note, summer camps are registering now. I did see that the YMCA in Fountain and all around the Pike's Peak region is offering a $0.00 join fee from now through April the 30th, so you have a little time if you'd like to join the Y in any of their summer camps. I know I did when my child was smaller, and they were great. They're at ppymca.org, and you can register your child for summer camp. I also attended the month of the Military Child Event at Mesa Elementary School with Lieutenant Governor Primmer Vera, and I also got to take a selfie with Hulk. So I'll keep that, I'll blow that up and take a picture, and Hulk loves to give kisses, so had a busy week. Again, I am excited about Small Business Week, and I also want to say kudos to our street department. I did see Bob McDonald. Is he still here? I, I like those photos that I saw online and about, you know, being cautious about the people that are working on the streets. Yes, so that was very nice, and it was good to see your picture as the manager there. That was a, a nice touch, so thank you for that. And I think that's all I have, but I really appreciated Fountain taking the lead and, and safety of our streets department. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly recognize, I was glad to see House Bill 241074 pass, which elevates to a Class 4 felony, anyone knowingly harming or causing injury to service law enforcement animals. So I just wanted to say I was, I was glad to see that pass. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say thank you to the staff. Before I left town, we had a good strategic planning meeting, came up with some good recommendations that we'll be discussing at a future meeting, but just thanks to staff for their participation. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I too would like to give shout out to the state when every once in a while a good bill passes, along with the law enforcement K-9 bill. Senate Bill 24-087 was signed yesterday, I believe, by the governor. It's a really common sense law. If you go into a healthcare facility and they use some type of lotion on you, normally even if they use like this much out of the big tube, they have to throw the tube out and you can't take it home with you. This law entitles you to take it home with you. And to wait, stop the waste in these prescribed ointments and things that you might get, you know, to put on a wound when you go home that you have to just turn around and go to the pharmacy and get another tube of it or whatever. So thank you for a common sense law being passed to hopefully save us all a little bit of money and a little bit less waste in our environment. PPACG had a meeting. We continue to work on the Long Range Transportation Plan and all that that entails. Had a good meeting with the veterans. I know they're here today about Memorial Day and I'm really excited that that will be hosted over at VFW this year at 11:00 a.m. But if you want to go a little bit early, from 7:00 to 10:00, they're having a pancake breakfast. But the ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. with the flag raising in the parking lot and then the rest of the ceremony in the back and that is open the public. So I hope to see people be able to attend that. Dropped by the Fountain Valley Senior Center and had a birthday ice cream with them. And try not to keep ice cream in the house. So it was a nice, just the right amount of treat to have and not have to force myself to, you know, eat the whole half gallon, right? And Salvation Army had a nice thank you event that I attended. Did just thanking everybody and of course we have a partnership with them doing our Lighten the Load project. So that was, that was a good event to attend. And so that is it. And start with staff. Okay? Any staff? Nope. Yes.
One thing to add on to Councilwoman Duncan, I appreciate that. Kudos for the roadwork safety. Over the last five years, almost 600 road workers were killed on the highways throughout the United States. So it's definitely something that we're trying to promote this year and just to slow down in those cone zones and try to keep those workers so they can go home at night. So thanks again.
Yes, Dan?
My next in line. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I just wanted to do a little follow up. We had an individual resident come in at the end of February, Mr. Bob Dotson, who had come in to express some concerns and ask some questions about the cost of upgrading his electrical service. I was here, but I wasn't familiar with his situation. So during some other items on the agenda, I took the opportunity to step out and visit with him and get a little bit more information on his situation. And then it gave me the information that I needed that I could follow up with my staff. And the next morning, I visited with Carl Christian, our Deputy Utilities Director, and learned that Mr. Dotson lives in an area that, it's an older area of town. And when it was originally built, the electric lines were only sized for much smaller loads. And so at some point in time, we had gone in and we had upgraded the entire area. And then to recover the cost of those upgrades, we had basically divided that by the number of services that were in that area. And it came out to about $500 a service. And then when each resident or customer would come in and upgrade their service, then we would charge that in addition to the upgrade charge. And so I was able to explain that to Carl and Carl contacted Mr. Dotson. What I later learned was what Mr. Dotson was having a problem with is he likes to put out a lot of Christmas decorations. And so he was overloading a couple of his circuits. And so it was, he had talked to an electrician and the electricians, well, I don't know if he, if the electrician encouraged him or he just came to the decision on his own that he wanted to upgrade his system or his service from 100 amp to a 200 amp. Well, he got into the process and started to learn that it was going to cost a considerable amount of money to do that. When Carl reached out to him and visited with him and he explained to Carl exactly what he was doing, Carl was able to do some troubleshooting and advise him that if he made some very minor modifications to his existing system and how he plugged in his lights and various other things, that he wouldn't have to go through the whole process of upgrading his system. And so he was able to achieve his objective without having to go through a pretty costly upgrade. He came to the council meeting, the last council meeting, unfortunately got here a little bit later after we started, but he did visit with our city manager and express some gratitude for the assistance that we were able to provide to him. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we have brought that matter to closure and it's a positive outcome.
So he'll be able to have all his Christmas lights?
And, and his neighbors and everybody else who wants to drive by will be able to enjoy a yard full of Christmas lights.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But I'll bet you those people that are on the, what is it, the Great Christmas Light Fight, I bet they've had to pay to upgrade their.
I suspect, some of those I've seen, there's no doubt in my mind that they might have had to get their own transformers.
So if he wants to do that and be on the show, he's going to have to upgrade it, okay?
Yeah. No, but I think for what he, for what he likes to do, he's covered now.
Madam Mayor, can I say something else?
Yeah.
I just want to add that he actually showed up late to that last meeting, but he waited all the way to the end of it just to pull me aside to let me know how impressed he was, not just with Dan, but with Carl. He couldn't remember Carl's name. He said, he just said, "He's top notch guy." But he just wanted to make sure that he let us know like how grateful he was and the great job that these guys did to help him out. So I want to share that.
Great. Thank you so much for letting us have that update on that. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. Okay, any other staff members? IT, anything over there? Nope. Clerk, anybody? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just have one more plug. So the Wayfinding System Signage Campaign for surveys is this month. This is the input month. So it's really critical for us to get as much public input through that process. And it does include all city employees and/or elected officials. So I just am giving that plug to please complete that survey. The link is on our homepage.
Yeah. And a part of that survey was paid for with a grant, correct?
So it's not a grant. It was the match with the Urban Renewal Authority. The Urban Renewal Authority matched the funds to make sure we had enough to really provide a robust plan.
Okay. And this is the time when somebody comes to visit you in town, they say, "I can't find this. I had a hard time finding that." Where's this, where's this cough, where's the cough, whatever? Okay. This is the time where, when you're driving around town, you go, "Oh, there's a sign missing there." This is the time to say that.
Right. As well as like park amenities, public amenities, public services, anything like that. And definitely for our business community as well. You know, what can you do to shop local instead of going up or down the I-25 corridor? So that is the emphasis of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other staff members? If not, I will take it on to Public to Be Heard. And I do have two cards. So if you wanted to be heard under Public to Be Heard now, tonight, you do have a couple more minutes to get a card in while we work through the first two cards. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. And my first card is from Bobby V. Hill, V. Hill from the VFW. Please come down and state your name for the record. And if you could turn the mic on there. Middle button, there you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Bobby V. Hill, sorry. Thank you, guys. Commander Aaron Heims was not able to make it this evening. He asked me to step in with updates for the VFW and the events that we're having. So Friday, I'm sorry, yeah, Friday, 4/26, we are having another drag show and dinner. On 4/27, we'll be having a Blues and Brews band come out to the VFW. On 5/4, we'll be having the installation of the new leadership at the VFW for the 24, 25 year. On Cinco de Mayo, we will be having a free, to the public, free dinner, donations only, and Cinco de Mayo themed event. That will start at 4:00 p.m. On Memorial Day, as you stated, we will be joining with the American Legion. And we will start with pancake breakfast at 7:00 at the VFW. And then at 11:00, the flag raising and the move to the ceremony in the back. And then food, of course, we like, we like tea down there. I do believe that's all I've got.
Great. You guys are so busy.
Yes, ma'am.
Really appreciate that. And your building's open, bingo's back open, all that stuff's back open.
I will be your bingo caller tomorrow if you want to come down.
Okay.
So, yes, that starts at 6:00. Bingo's open, the floors look awesome, the new furniture was a lot of work, but we got it done and come on down and see it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second card I have is from Destiny Angel. If you could please come down and state your name for the record? Well, if you could push the middle button on the mic and then that'll start your, perfect. And if it starts blinking, it means you, time is almost up, so, okay?
Hello. My name is Destiny Angel Atkins is my last name. And I was here a couple of weeks ago and I'd wanted to come up and address council in my city and say hello and introduce myself. And I introduced myself by saying hello instead of hello because I eliminate hell and all of its toxicity. I don't want it in my life. And unfortunately, tonight, I don't have very good things to address to the city because my experience here in Fountain, and I've been a resident since 2016, has been really bad. And by really bad, I mean I've worked at a couple, couple different places and my experiences there did not go very well. And I employed, I got employed over at the Snack Shack. Some people might know me from the Snack Shack. I used to be a cashier from over there. And I got to know the public. The public people are really very amazing and I like them very much. And I'm here to speak on their behalf and my own. With my experience here in this town, I noticed a lot of injustices that are very upsetting and I'm becoming. And I've tried to, I've tried to address people of importance who I thought were people of importance. And I really didn't get anywhere. I was ignored, shunned, outcasted, basically blacklisted in here in the town, in the town that I live in. Mayor Sharon Thompson, we've actually met before. You walked up my driveway when I was watering the grass and you shook my hand and you handed me your paperwork and you were looking for votes. I tried to call you several times and I didn't get any, any response. I left several voicemails and I didn't get any response. I heard about a new policy in the police station, about an open door policy, where you go in and you just speak and you just go in as a member of the public, we're here to serve you. That did apply to me. And I just, I wanted to stand here and say thank you, Chief Cristiani, for making that available and hearing me out when I had some things that I needed to address to the city and the town when I didn't feel safe. This was not a safe place for me. And so I was able to go to the chief of police and he sat down and had a conversation with me. Well, something that he did say is, "Wow, you really don't seem like anything that I've heard." So apparently people are talking, but nobody's saying anything to me. And with the things and the encounters that I was experiencing, I felt the need to go to these places myself. Single mom, all by myself, I stand here alone with my voice shaken and all, like it just, it's just little old me. And I address these people minus the middle man, but there's this chain of command that we have to follow to get our point across. And we get five minutes, we get five minutes time is all I've got here right now. I have concerns involving the school district, concerns involving this building right here that I'm standing in. This is not my first time in here. There was a case that was held here that was of, an assault case that was reduced to harassment and it was not just harassment. And that's something that I need to address here. And I'm running out of time, although I do watch these videos online. And I want to thank you for making that accessible to the public because for some time, I wasn't welcome here. I was told and strongly urged and advised not to come here. I came here one time, I was advised to come here because these are the people, you are the people that I should be addressing, correct? About these issues. Only I was told not to come back here because apparently I was a threat and people had some bad things to say. Well, inside of that, there's a prosecutor that was here, that used to work here, named Kate Parker, that was representing, supposed to be representing my daughter in a case last year, who told some lies and made some false allegations on me. And so it's safe to assume that maybe the public was mistreating me because of these lies and allegations that she told on me. I'm here to say that those were false. Those were all lies. I would never have done anything like that. And I'm basically here to redeem myself and introduce myself appropriately. Again, I say, "Hello, my name is Destiny Angel and I have a lot that I wanted to bring to this town because I actually like this town. I respect it and I respect the people in it." And I was kind of like looking for my tribe, trying to see where I could fit in. And it's clear and obvious that you guys don't want me here and I'm okay with that. But I'm not okay with the way that I'm about to leave. Before I leave here, I'm going to state my peace and who I am and let you all know that those are lies. And I don't appreciate it. And then I get a lot, I got a lot of criticism and I got a lot of, a lot of negativity and I didn't want that. That's like against everything I stand for. And I know, and I'm a spiritual woman. I know that it is my birthright to be at peace. And I was here two weeks ago and there was a woman that retired and she was sitting over there and I just want to give her a little shout out. I never met her before, but I did hear her say in her closing that Jesus Christ, she mentioned Jesus Christ, she gave it all to Him and that she was thankful for this experience in and of itself. And that was beautiful to me and I appreciated that. And I'm just kind of, I'm here letting you know that I'm going to need some help and assistance and people to.
Ms. Destiny, if I could get you to wrap up your comments, please?
I am. I need support. And when I needed support, it wasn't there. I'm looking at you. I needed support and it wasn't there. I'm still needing support because that was unresolved and justice wasn't served. I'm here wanting the justice. On the back of my card, it says, "Where do you, where does one go for justice?"
Okay, I need you to, I need you to please wrap up your comments. You're, you're over your five minute time.
Yeah. Well.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And thank you for coming in. And, and you know, unfortunately, when there are court cases going on and there's litigation going on with the city, when you reach out to us, we cannot get back to you. I believe I told you that in passing one day, you tried to talk with me and I said, "I'm sorry, I can't speak with you." And, and it's just the way our system is set up. Once something is in the courts, we cannot get involved with it. It has to follow through the process. And so thank you for coming in now that the case is over and we have no control over anything that goes on in D-8. D-8 is their own entity and we're in there a whole separate governing body. So people that have struggles with the school district have to keep working through the school district process. So for.
Who is responsible for the school district, are you not?
Well, the, the school board is, you can go to the school board meetings, but Dr. Owens is the superintendent of the school district. And so if you have an issue with the school district, that's who you have to, have to work through, them. And their, their meetings, I don't know if they livestream them or not, but I know that they put their agendas online. We all have to. So you can go to their website and see when their meetings are.
Well, excuse me and my apologies for going past my time.
Well, I'm answering, I'm just answering your question.
Well, thank you. You know, I did, I was actually watching one of your lives and it took you all of like 10 minutes to decide if we get, if the, if the people get five minutes to speak. So I'm kind of getting that time back and I, yeah, that's, that's what I'm here for. There are five other things that I would like to address. I don't have time. I'm all out of time.
Right.
But when and who do I contact to address these things?
You're more than welcome to contact me through a letter. You can talk to our city manager and then we can determine, you know, if there's anything going on court wise or whatever. And then, and I'd be happy to, to meet with you through them now that the court cases cases are all over and settled.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, those are the only two cards I have tonight, and so that's going to take us on to the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have item 7A on the consent agenda tonight. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember Estes?
Move to approve consent.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor of consent agenda. Is there any further deliberation? Is there any questions from either council member online? Hearing done. Please vote.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 8A, Old Business, Discussion on the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority, PPRTA. So this is back, not to take a vote tonight, but to have a discussion, because the way the timeline went with PPRTA, and the timeline they needed, if there was any chance at all that we were going to consider putting this on the ballot measure this year, the timeline that PPRTA had for their board to even discuss it had to begin in March. We were nowhere ready in March to make that decision, but based on what they needed us to do for their processes, we had to move down the road and see if they would even let us consider it this year as a board, as their main board and their CAC board. And so now that we've had to do that, we're going to have, amongst the council tonight, we're going to have the formal discussion on if we want to consider putting PPRTA on the ballot, because it's pretty much time now to, you know, have a discussion tonight amongst the council members and give staff direction on where we want to go with this. So Todd, if you want to...
You know, Mayor, we don't have any type of presentation. It's listed under Old Business because it has been discussed multiple times before. You summarized very well, this is the time, as everyone is familiar with last year's attempt, this is a pretty extensive timeline to attempt to join PPRTA. So we're at that point now where we really have to make that final determination, even to start moving forward, as you mentioned, with the individual members of PPRTA. So the intent tonight was really just to have an open discussion amongst the council to give us that direction, as you mentioned. So we don't have any official presentation. We've discussed PPRTA, and we do have to make that determination tonight if we want to start moving forward. So, open discussion. When you feel it's appropriate, I do have kind of the summary of the last roadway focus group meeting that we had last month, and I'll be happy to read that summary to the council as well.
Okay, great. So I'll take, if anybody wants to kick it off first, just open your mic, and I'll take a couple of comments from us in the room, and then I'll go to some council members online, and we'll try to kind of go back and forth there so they feel like they're, you know, really part of the discussion going on here tonight. So is there anybody who'd like to, like to kick it off? Councilmember Hinton?
I'll state it for the record and for the public. I think, me personally, if we're trying to do PPRTA for this year, I don't think we're in the spot to do it. I don't think that we have the enough ability to provide that resources to the public right now and give that education on PPRTA. I would look for a next-year timeframe, and if we're going to do that, we need to start that now. But starting, trying to get it on this year is the definition of insanity. We did it once already, right? And it wasn't, it didn't go over well, right? And so I don't want to repeat that same thing because you're going to get the same result. I think we need to do more as far as educating the public on PPRTA so that we have a chance at a successful ballot measure to be approved. And I think it really boils down to the finer details in PPRT, what that really benefits our city. I've heard a lot, well, it's another tax. It's not another tax. It's already, you're already, we're already paying that. I'm not going to go into the details of it. You're already paying it, we're just going to get the residuals from that, from PPRTA, right? And I think some people just thought, like, just more that we're adding to the city. We're not adding, we're trying to gain those funds that you already pay each and every day, you pay. And so I think it's just more educating, but I think right now, we're behind the power curve to try to achieve that and put it on the ballot for this year. I'm in, I'm in the favor for next year because I think it'd be more advantageous in that we have a little bit of time to educate the public. I understand that there's an election going on, but that doesn't mean people are going to vote during a high election. They're only focusing on the main election that's happening, and sometimes that could get dropped off, and I don't foresee that number going up just because it's a major election this year. I actually see that number going down because people are just focusing on one thing, and that's my opinion on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Estes?
I'm going to join Councilmember Hinton. I do believe in PPRTA, I just don't think this is the year. I would like us to look at it for next year. Is it going to solve all of our problems? No. Is it a stepping stone to solving our problems? Yes. I think that we have to look at it because there is no other way that we are going to get the millions of dollars that we need to fix our roads. Just there's, I totally agree with Fred, there is no way that we are ready to get it to the ballot. And it's only, what is it, four or five months ago that the citizens voted? We need time for them to, us to appreciate their vote and say, yes, we heard you, but we're going to try to come back and say, okay, you told us something, but we're going to try to figure out, is there a better way for us to express the positivities of joining PPRTA? But I don't see it happening this year.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Hersberg or Councilmember Rick, please unmute, and you can fight over who's going to go first.
This is Jennifer, and I just wanted to say fundamentally, I support the idea of PPRTA. As a small community, I think in many things, we find we can do more together than apart. I mean, roadway and infrastructure is, I think is one of those. But I do agree that the timeline doesn't really fit. And in addition to information sharing, I think one of the probably most important things would be to get community engagement and community buy-in, because as good of an idea as we may think it is, it's the community that needs to get behind this idea. And if we can do that, I would say a timeline, for me, would be more like 2026. I'd definitely like 24, 25 would be maybe, but definitely something down the road if we can get community engagement and support.
Okay, were you through? It's hard to tell.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. You need like over and out or something when the people online are done. Councilmember Rick?
Yes. I think we could possibly do it this year. However, given the amount of members on the council that feel we should wait, I think we can wait. The two things that I would say is, one, if we're going to wait, I would want staff to develop a timeline and present it to us soon. If we wait to 25, what does the timeline look like for doing that? And if we wait till 26, what does that timeline look? I need us to lay down a timeline that says, here's, if we're going to go in 25, here's where we're going to need to make the decision at. I need that decision to be disseminated to the public so that everybody knows, here's when we're going to do it, so that they can come forward and express their opinions. And then, secondly, we need to start developing an education program now. We need to have a plan that says, this person in this position is going to do these actions at these times. I don't want to wait and make a decision and then go, oh, we haven't developed a plan yet. I need two or three months to develop a plan. I want to have a plan ready so that we can pull it off the shelf and implement it when we decide, when we get ready to make the decision. But if the majority of council wants to wait, I can certainly support that. That's all I have, then, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so I just want to add one more thing because Jennifer said something about community involvement. We really do need the community. There are seven of us, and their community is, we heard your voice, and we respect that. But I don't think we're that far off as far as a solution. I think we're pretty closer than what we really think, and I think if we can get the community buy-in and get your voice out there, as well as our voice, and join with us, because once it goes on the ballot, staff's out of it, they can't legally participate and say anything. So it falls down on us and you to get involved in that. So I really just, we really just need the community to get involved, and I know that you could do that. And I don't think that we are that far apart as far as our thinking, as far as the improvement of the roads and PPRTA, as Councilmember Estes says, it's just, it's a part solution. We will need to work on other solutions, and I think you guys recognize that, but we do need community engagement to make this, to be successful.
Okay. Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I feel like it's too soon to bring it back. It was, what, 45-55 on the original vote? They lost by 10 points. All the surveys we were running say it was going to pass by 16. I feel it's too soon to talk about this right now.
Too soon to put it on the ballot, but still, are you okay with us keeping, looking at it and, you know, as an option?
Well, yeah.
Because there's always options.
Right, and we can keep discussing, and yeah, there can be emails, you know.
Right. I just want to clarify that.
Right, right, but I'm just, yeah. That's where I'm coming from, is I think the citizens have spoken, less than a year from an election. I don't think, I don't think the results are going to be much different unless we were willing to really, 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 you know, put in a good effort. I don't think that's going to happen right now, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. I just would like to say that what I've been hearing from the community members is that if we join PPRTA, then our taxes will be as high as the taxes in Colorado Springs. So I think that's where one of the focuses that we need on our education to the community and address those concerns.
So you're wanting to not put it on this year?
Well, we had the initial vote, and I voted no, so, yeah.
Well, you voted no for pursuing the timeline, I just wanted to verify it, so, yeah. Okay. All righty. So, yeah, I also concur with everyone, it's a huge campaign issue. We do need a long-range, long-term focus that brings millions of dollars, not thousands of dollars, back to our city for roads. And as a community, we're coming up with thousands, but we're essentially giving away over $2 million a year in sales tax people are paying when they're voting, when they're shopping in these various areas that businesses are part of PPRTA. But there's so much noise this year in general, in our, not only our community, but our state and nationally, there's just so much noise. I think trying to insert another message this year would be extraordinarily difficult to get it across, and so I think we need to look at all that's going on there. Could you go ahead and share the roadway? The roadway focus group, for people who don't know, is a group of citizens that's been meeting for...
Since 2017.
Since 2017. So this is not new, this is not put together just for this issue. This was put together, when I first got on council, the engineer brought a list of streets to the city, and we were expected to rubber stamp it or not, right? And a little rebellion, me, I started saying, we're not going to just rubber stamp it, right? And when Todd came on staff, you came up with this great idea for a roadway focus group that brings citizens out of every area in the town to have input on what areas that they want to focus on. And I think, I think Councilmember Hersberg has been part of that group for a number of years.
She has.
Now she's kind of as an at-large member, representing us, and she had a great suggestion a few weeks ago to enlarge the board with some more citizens on that. So I just want to make sure everybody understands what the roadway focus group is.
Goodbye.
It's not anything formal, but it's a great group of citizens doing a lot of hard work for us for a lot of years.
It really is, and, you know, I think to summarize that group, we've got the same group of folks that have been together since 2017. So, and they literally get down with Bob and myself into the weeds of exactly which road is going to be done, and they make sure that that's done fairly across the whole city. So it's been a great group. But to summarize their meeting minutes from the last meeting in terms of the timing of PPRTA this year, I'm just going to read exactly from the notes. "The suggestion of the RFG for this initiative stands at not looking to revisit joining PPRTA until 2025 at the earliest, with 2026 being the main target date. It would be wise to wait on taking this to vote as we have some lessons learned from our past attempts to join PPRTA, and we have more ideas on how we can get more information out there for community awareness on this topic. This allows the time needed to have a more solid foundation to work from on this topic with more support. We need to start recruiting for the citizen-led group on this right away if we want to be successful for a 2026 vote. If we do this, we will need an oversight committee for the funding utilized for this venture. CAPA, which is the Colorado Pavement Association, would be a great recourse for us to utilize and speak to PPRTA, share their information, and get their help to pass this initiative with the community's support."
Okay.
So they basically, to summarize, agree with everyone's comments on council tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
I'm going to roll tonight, I'm going to double down on my comment. There are people here in the audience, and there's people online that are very influenced the community. We need your help. So when we have meetings of community engagement meetings, we don't need four or five people, we need a ton of people to come out and show out, and we need you to be able to support in this effort. I don't care if it's yay or nay for it, I want to hear, at least I want to hear it, and I'm sure my rest of colleagues want to hear your opinion out there on either way so that we can make the most educated decision when it comes to our city. I said it again, our city. This is my city too, right? And I'm invested in it, and I know that you're invested in it too, so I'm issuing a challenge. When we have meetings and community engagement, let's show up, let's show out, because we need to see you all.
All right, thank you. You can have another bite if you want it to. Keep on coming back, it's okay. All right. Councilmember Duncan?
So, yeah, I agree. You know, this question is for Todd. The, you said CAPA, C-A-P-A, is the Colorado Association, Pavement Association?
Yeah. Colorado Asphalt. Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association.
Colorado Asphalt, okay.
And we've had the...
Don't say that too fast, huh?
We've had, yeah. We've had the director of CAPA come in once to speak to the RFG, and then he and Bob continually communicate, and they help with these type of initiatives, processes, the positives, negatives around the state, so we're going to really lean on them as a resource.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott? We passed this, moving forward with it, because we had to sort of put the cart before the horse, just the way the timeline felt that, you know, RTA wanted, and we passed it as a...
Resolution.
Resolution.
Right.
So if we're not going to move forward with this, and also to give citizens time to give us feedback, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Doesn't take that long to drop us an email of a few sentences, folks, we don't need a novel, okay? And just a few sentences on, you know, your concerns on the road condition in the city of Fountain. And so what would be the next best step?
Yeah, so in March, the last meeting in March, the city council adopted a resolution, not necessarily moving forward with PPRTA, but asking the PPRTA board to have, go out to the member cities to ask them, because one of the first steps you have to do is you have to ask them permission to join. And so that resolution the city council adopted at that point got the ball rolling for those cities, the city representatives from PPRTA to go out to their various councils to ask them, hey, is it okay if Fountain joins? Theoretically, if they would have come back and said yes, at some future date, the city council would have adopted a resolution or maybe an ordinance moving forward with the ballot question. So we weren't there yet. However, we do have a formal action that was taken in March, March 26th, to adopt a resolution. So my suggestion is that by our next meeting, if this is the direction the council wants us to head, we would have another resolution... we would have another resolution referencing this March resolution that would basically reverse the action. I think it's better to have it formal, and it also, like you said, Mayor, gives time for the community to think about it, come back, provide their thoughts, feedback, whatever that is.
Okay. I think it sounds like that's what everybody would like you to do. Not this year, you know, doesn't mean it's off the table forever, but it sounds like we've got some people saying twenty-five, twenty-six, and I think the timeline that Councilmember Rick suggested might help us kind of narrow that down. But in the meantime, we as a community need to have these big conversations. When we have big issues in our city, we need to have conversations. We need to be open and willing to listen to one another and hear what each other are saying and be willing to listen to each other's ideas. And I hope we can continue doing that around this, but not only this, but other things that are going on in the community and other needs that our citizens have. And if we're just going to get out there and slam each other because, you know, your idea is different than mine, we're not going to get anywhere. So let's just have open conversations about this and keep the door open. And I agree with Councilmember Hinton. We need you to show up. It's very frustrating when we put stuff together and we have, you know, two, three people show up, and especially if you've invited somebody down to do a presentation for you. We really need you to, really need you to come. There's a lot of things going on in this city, and not only from building and road money and just a lot of stuff going on. And I know it's really, really hard, but that's one of the attempts, is putting these meetings online for if it's not convenient for you to be here tonight or watch it tonight. They are taped, and you can go back and review them. And all our email addresses are online, and love to hear from some of you. And not just the form letters where people fill in my email address and send, you know, you get a whole bunch of them. And they're not even addressed to the mayor. They're addressed to the, you know, as their representative or something for the federal government. So want to hear from you. Okay, alrighty. So with that, we will move on from the discussion of the PPRTA. And thank you, everybody, for your thoughts and insights on that. And I think we're all passionate about wanting to see our roads fixed. And it's just a matter of figuring out all the pieces and keep putting them together. That type... Yes, Councilmember Estes?
I just want to comment. You know, like I said, this is not the end-all solution. And like Mr. Hinton said, we're seven people out of 30,000. We need to hear your solutions too. We cannot always come up with the ultimate solution. There's 30,000 people in this town. Somebody, you've got to work together and help us find the solution. Because we can't do it without you. You know, we're not going to say, you know, "We offer a solution, and you said no." So give us some other options. Because that's, it's very vital that we hear that, not just "no, no, no, no." Engage with this. Help us find those options of what to do to figure this out. So that's what we need, and so we just need to, you know, work together. Thank you.
And Scott, when you bring this back in a couple of weeks...
Yes, Pam.
If you could bring that slide, because I don't want to ask you to try to pull it up tonight. I meant to call you earlier today and slip my mind. If you could bring that slide back where it shows that if we make, when people say you just need to make cuts in the staff, if you could bring that slide back, whichever one of you has it, and show that, because I think that's, I think that's a really interesting slide. So thank you very much. Okay. Oh, yes.
So I'm not sure. I know that Sharon went to the meeting, and Scott, maybe you can answer the question, because part of what we get is based on who joined PPRTA. So when we didn't get approved from the voters last year, do we know if anybody else joined PPRTA, another municipality?
Not last year, no.
None?
No.
No.
Okay.
The last one was Calhan, and I can't remember what year that was.
Several years ago.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Okay. Because it depends on, you know, the percentage, right?
Yeah.
And so this year, do we know if anybody else has applied?
No.
No.
All right, thank you.
I mean, yes, we do know, and no one's applied. They want that to sound the wrong way.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I think, I think probably the only other person would be one of our neighbors to the far north, and they would actually be upside down on the numbers, where they're paying more than like we were for many, many years. And so, yep. Okay, all right. This is a discussion amongst the council members. And Nick, in two weeks, when we bring it back as a resolution, then we'll, then we'll have public comment. Okay, or you can send an email. Okay. This takes us on to item 9B, public hearing. I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of Ordinance 1799, an ordinance approving the CNS Legend overall development plan located at 7755 CNS Road and here and after more specifically described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening. This is Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. As you mentioned, the item before you is consideration of an overall development plan for the CNS Legend property. It's located at the southeast corner of CNS Road and Legend Oak in a Zoned Planned Unit Development Zone District. The property is approximately 4.1 acres and was previously the location of the Fellowship of the Rockies religious institution. They have sold the property to a new property owner who is looking to redevelop the vacant church building into a pediatric dentist office, but then also develop the remaining portion of the site into some low-impact commercial, business offices, professional services, childcare, and other child activities. They are keeping those uses very child-friendly due to the nature of their pediatric dental office and their clientele. They want to make sure that there aren't any, as they perceive undesirable uses within their commercial shopping area. Before they started the process with the city, they did hold a neighborhood meeting in April of 2023, at which time one resident had attended, and they had some concerns regarding some of the timing of the construction and any of the potential increase in traffic. The existing access points to the property, there's one at the far east corner that accesses CNS Road to the north, and then there's one that accesses Legend Oak to the west. Those two access points will remain. They're not going to change it, relocated, or do any upgrades to it due to the nature of the proposed uses. There would be a limited impact to the additional traffic. All PUD-zoned properties are required to provide a minimum open space, so for commercial zone districts, a minimum of 15% of the gross acreage must be provided. So in this case, it's a little bit over half an acre. Those minimum open space requirements are all going to be satisfied through the minimum open space requirements on each lot that is proposed. The site is located within the Jimmy Camp Creek Drainage Basin and is subject to the Drainage Basin fees. The flows generally flow from the northwest to the southeast to an existing detention pond in the southeast corner of the site. So as I mentioned, the two access points, the CNS Road, one to the north, the Legend Oak to the west, and the detention pond is located in the southeast corner. The existing church building was located here. They do have plans to expand that structure with an addition should the overall development plan be granted to expand that, as I mentioned, into the pediatric dentist's office. And then they are proposing additional pad sites throughout the site, again with those low-impact commercial developments. The Future Land Use Plan of the Comprehensive Development Plan does recommend single-family residential. The request is generally not in conformance, however, the residential desired attributes do include additional non-residential uses, so long as they don't create additional traffic volumes. As the primary access would be to the intersection of Legend Oak and CNS, there wouldn't be additional traffic that would be generated from that site that would be traveling internal to the heritage residential development. So staff is supportive of the deviation. Staff does find that the overall development plan is consistent with the review criteria set forth in Section 172230 of the Fountain Municipal Code. This item was presented before the Planning Commission at that March meeting, at their March meeting, at which time they made a recommendation of approval subject to conditions that the fire apparatus access road in excess of 150 feet is provided with the minimum width and turnaround provisions, and that the access road is within proximity to the buildings will be depicted on future plans. Staff does not oppose the approval of Ordinance 1799 on first reading tonight of the CNS Legend overall development plan, subject to the same conditions that were put forth before Planning Commission. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, are there any questions from council members? Are there any questions from Councilmember Hersberg or Rick?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
The applicant is in attendance tonight, if there are any questions for them as well.
Okay. Does the applicant want to come forward and have anything to say?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Mary Stettler. My husband and I own Kids Rock Pediatric Dentistry and Orthodontics. We have been in business since 2015 and up in Colorado Springs, and we have a lot of patients that come from Fountain. And so we really want to come in and be a partner with your city in order to provide the services for those children. And so the church building has sat empty for quite some time, and so we are really looking forward. It's been a long process through everything to come and hopefully get this rezoned so that we can improve that lot and provide these services for your community. So, thank you.
Having been in that building for several church services over the years, I'm looking forward to seeing how you're going to re-adapt that great big room with the tall ceiling.
Yeah.
For your use, that'll be really interesting to see when you, I hope you have a grand opening and invite us all.
We will, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have a question. I just have a statement. I'm welcoming the new business in the area. As a resident that lives near your property, I'm concerned about the trucks. You know, my street is often used as an entry and exit way, and it is in really bad condition. So I don't know if something's been put in place or that you know about that, but we just have had, our road is, it has been bad from inception. And so when, every time someone builds in that area, our road is used as like a shortcut, and it's really devastating to, you know, the street is almost unrepairable as it is. So I just want, you know, I don't know if there's something that has been taken into consideration or...
I can answer that for you. You betcha, you bet. Let's see, Deetra, if you'll take a look at the site plan to the left right here. The street that you're talking about, as it goes to the north, is right there off of Legend Oak. That's where people turn right to use that shortcut to go up into your area. So that you're aware, if, Kristi's going to show the approximate area that the Mesa Ridge development will be coming in, probably as soon as next year, right in that area, they're going to be building an access corridor that that will go from CNS, come up and around, and it will connect with Cross Creek, Cross Creek Road. So our assumption is, once that connection is made, there really won't be any reason for any folks to use that residential street that you're speaking of. They will be using that planned access around there, and the developer will be paying for that access road. So we're hoping that that's going to alleviate your issues that you've got. And ma'am, we're hoping that'll bring you more traffic for your businesses, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We hope it's a win-win.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly sure when that's completed and when we would start to build, but, you know, as far as we're concerned, we could make sure that, you know, it's very specific that there's no shortcuts, that it's coming from CNS for our development piece.
But the issue tonight is just the rezoning of this particular piece of property.
You bet.
So, okay, any other comments from council members? Councilmember Hersberg? Okay, since this is...
I'm not in here.
Oh, okay. Did you have any questions about rezoning this?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. And since this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask if the public has any questions that they would like to ask staff or address the applicant as far as the rezoning of the lot. So please come down and state your name for the record.
Steve Foster. I live in Heritage. Can I have the plot plan? Can I borrow your... I'm concerned that right here, it drops down to a single lane going east, and I'm afraid the trucks coming down the road here, that's 40 mile an hour road. And people, I think they need a dedicated turn lane and an acceleration lane right here, and then also here, because this isn't a very far distance coming out into Heritage right there. So I think they're going to need one there also, maybe. But I'd like to see a turn lane here and an acceleration lane here. Like I say, because this is a single lane with just a stripe, and then it goes to separated here on CNS, going up the hill. But there is a lot of truck traffic that uses that road. I know they're not supposed to, but they're using it anyways, so. But like I say, I'm afraid people trying to turn in there, somebody's going to get rear-ended and...
Mayor, I can help with Steve's question also, I hope. Steve and I haven't had this conversation yet, but Steve is dialed in with all of our transportation around the city. So it's a great question. This whole section here, Steve, is going to be included with the improvements.
Could you use the pointer instead of the air? Because...
Steve's got it.
Can, really quick, before you start with pointing, circle, show me the church, what is now the church building. Okay, and then where's the tower? Okay, this, for some reason, on the map makes the property appear much larger than I think it is, so I just need to get that perspective. Okay, thank you.
So Steve, the area that you're concerned with right here, we have those same concerns. So we just, actually, we met with the developer yesterday of Mesa Ridge and discussed this section of CNS. So those improvements that they're going to be required to put in, they are going to entail this entire section as that north corridor that I discussed will be right in this area. So they're going to be required to come through, widen, and do those improvements through this whole area. They've been working on a traffic study, an improvement plan for CNS, so they're working with our city engineers as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'd actually like to see CNS drop down to a 30 mile an hour zone, if they could look at that also, possibly.
Okay, we'll have them look at it, yeah.
Because there's, like I say, the trucks, they hit their jake brakes right on that hill. And you hear them, you know, I've heard one last night, oh, probably 11 o'clock through there. But they're trash trucks and dirt haulers and stuff.
I'll have them make sure they look at that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. And how does, when a citizen comes in and they're concerned about the speed of an area, can you explain how that is addressed?
Sure. Typically, what we would like folks to do is kind of put it in writing for us so we understand the specific concerns. And then we try to put together a safety plan. We work with the PD. They'll put their, their speed trailers out. They'll monitor the speeds. We'll get traffic counts on that, and then we turn that over to a traffic engineer, and they take a look at it. And ultimately, those decisions are made by traffic engineers. We just don't randomly change those. There's certain criteria that has to be met for the different speed limits on the roads. So it's all a matrix, and it's state standards, it's federal standards. We just don't make independent decisions on those.
And we can't do anything about Mesa Ridge Parkway, Highway 85?
Correct.
Because those are, you know, state highways. And be careful what you ask for, because the last time somebody asked for a study on 85, I think they raised it 10 miles an hour.
They did, and we've had others where we've put in traffic deterrent devices. We've done different things in neighborhoods. And then Bob still gets calls and complaints because those are in the neighborhood. So some folks want them. When you put them in, the same number of folks, percentage-wise, usually wants you to rip them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments from anyone in the audience or council members online? Okay, if not, I'm closing the public hearing portion of this meeting, and I'm bringing it back up to the dais and for the council to make a decision. So, council, what would you like to do with Ordinance 1799? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve on first reading of Ordinance 1799.
Were you going to add any of the conditions?
Yes, an ordinance approving the CNS Legend overall development plan located at 7755 CNS Road.
And down at the bottom, are we going to, any of the conditions?
And here more specifically, Exhibit A, where is that at?
That's okay.
Let's see here. Fire, also adding the fire apparatus access road in excess of 150 feet shall be provided with, within the turnaround provisions and of their approved design. And a fire apparatus road within proximity of the building will require... apparatus road within proximity of the building will require depiction of the turning radius to enter the maneuver within the exit of the parking lot.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Ordinance 1799 with the, subject to the conditions that Councilmember Hinton just read into the record. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation from the council members? Seeing none, please vote.
Mayor Protemric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 9C, Resolution Number 24-016, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the hiring of A1 chip seal to provide professional road maintenance on three projects in the city. Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution that we spoke about earlier, hiring A1 chip seal. We've got three roads that we're going to do preventative maintenance on. One is Comanche Village Drive from Fountain Mesa down to 8587. The second is CNS Road from Fountain Mesa to Monterey. And then again, CNS Road from Monterey down to Duckwood, down by the circle there, are the three chip seal roads that we have scheduled this year that need some treatment. A lot of people ask, you know, we just built Duckwood a few years ago, or there were that portion of CNS. It is, is definitely time for a preventative maintenance. There is some ravelling going on in that asphalt. Some of it, I think, was just from the build site, but per, per recommendations, if we don't do something soon, we're going to get right into the same boat with the rest, kind we, kind of how we are with the rest of the city with, it's going to erode so much, now we're going to have to repave it instead of being able to do a chip seal or something like that down the road. So, down the hill is, we're going to do what we call a slurry seal, which is the least expensive treatment that we can do, and it is warranted on that roadway. That should give us about five or 10 years, five or seven years before we'll have to do a chip seal, all of which is a quarter of the cost of doing a mill and overlay, if not more. So, that preventative treatment is what keeps us, instead of sending $20, we're spending a dollar per square yard. So, it's, it's well worth it, and it ends up saving the city a lot of money in the, in the long run, is what we're trying to get to the point of with, with all of our major roads right now. Funding-wise and budget-wise, it's about all we can touch is our major roads, so we're trying to keep those in the best shape that we can until funding is found to start addressing some of these residential collectors and other residential streets. So, so that's all I have on that. The cost of that is the $183,040. That does include a 5%, 5% contingency, which we rarely have to use on these chip seal-type roads because it's a pretty straightforward treatment, but we always add that just in case we run into any issues along, in that construction.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Rick or Councilmember Hersberg, do you have any questions?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions for anyone in the audience regarding this resolution on the chip seal of these roads? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Estes?
I recommend approval of the 2024 sip chill, sip chip seal project, bid contract to A1 chip seal in the amount of $183,040.80. So, I encourage us to pass Resolution Number 24-016.
Thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution Number 24-016. Is there any further deliberation from council? Seeing none, please vote.
Mayor Protemric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 9D, Resolution Number 24-017, a resolution authorizing Schmidt Construction to provide professional road maintenance on three resurfacing projects throughout the city. Mr. McDonald, once again.
So, good evening again. So, this is the second part of our resurfacing project for 2024. This is actually the mill and overlay, which is a more extensive process of milling off the, a lot anyway, two inches of the poorer asphalt along the roadways, and then putting a fresh coat of asphalt down on those roadways. Three, three roadways we have planned for this year is Fountain Mesa Road from Cali Entrada north to CNS Road. So, that's an extension of what we started last year. We're trying to move our way up there. After we get north of CNS Road, it's going to get a lot more expensive because there's a lot more square yards of asphalt, and, and the asphalt is in much worse shape north of that intersection. In 2017, we did what we call a cape seal on CNS Road, all the way down to Ohio, actually. And we've, that, that treatment was meant to extend the life of that road about three to four years. We're well past that, and it is, and it is crumbling up now as you drive that road. We have crews continually along CNS Road now, trying to do temporary repairs until we can get that thing milled and overlaid. So, that's the first one. The second one is Ohio, Ohio Avenue, Burn Street, out to Jimmy Camp Road. Again, that's an extension of the project that we had last year. We ran out of money. We were trying to get it out to Ohio last year, just ran out of, or out to Jimmy Camp last year, and we ran out of funding. So, it's a continuation of that project out to Jimmy Camp Road, which I think will go well with the project of trying to get that span wire traffic control signal at that intersection also. So, and the third one is Sneffels, which is on the north side of the city. That's a little-known roadway unless you live up there, and that goes right off of Mesa Ridge Parkway. We have a small section up there that feeds all of the residential areas to the north of Mesa Ridge Parkway that are responsibility of the City of Fountain. That roadway is in pretty bad shape. We've done a lot of temporary patches up there, but is in desperate need of a mill and overlay before more extensive damage occurs where we won't be able to do that type of treatment here in the next couple of years. So, total cost for those three projects with Schmidt Construction, and this is an extension of the contract with Schmidt Construction. We've, go over a competitive bid about every four years, so this, I believe, is the last year of their bid, where we'll have to go out next year for bid again. But they continually provide the most economical cost for the city so far, and their total construction rate now is $535,000, $535,170, and that is including a 5% contingency.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from anyone up here in council? Any questions or comments from Councilmember Hersberg or Rick?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, is there any questions from anyone in the audience on this project? All right, seeing none, what would council like to do with Resolution Number 24-017? Council, oh, okay. Councilmember Duncan?
I recommend approval of Resolution 24-017 to award the 2024 pavement resurfacing projects to Schmidt Construction.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Mayor Protemric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item E, request by City Council to reschedule the regular council meeting. I asked to bring this back again. I know last week I said in June, since the 25th is the primary, suggesting that potentially we move the council meeting up one week. Got a call from our, from city clerk, I'm trying to say your first name, stating that the week before the council meeting on the 25th, several of us are going to be at CML. And so, we're not going to be, several of us might not be in town on the meeting of the 18th. So, looking over suggestions on how to have our two meetings for the month of June, I wanted to bring it back to the council for discussion and see what everyone would like to do. Scott says staff is fine with handling it either way, and that having, you know, so we can either leave it on the 25th, try to plan a short agenda, but we all know how that goes sometimes. We can move it and have two meetings in a row on June 4th and 11th. But when you, so when you put up the last week in May, that would actually be three weeks in a row we have council meetings, and then three weeks in a row we would be off. So, just going, looking for some guidance on what people are most comfortable doing, if that would be having meetings May 28th, June 4th, and June 11th. If we, if we moved the 25th meeting up, have to move it up, you know, at each of them up a couple of weeks essentially, or we can leave it the same, you know, and through, like I said, you have three weeks in a row, you'd have meetings, and then you'd have three weeks in a row where you didn't have it, because per city charter, we do have to have two meetings a month. So, just kind of looking for guidance on what people are comfortable doing.
I'm okay with keeping the, the same schedule. I, I know that we say, every time you say you want a short meeting, it ended up going long, but I'm okay with keeping that schedule, so that we just stay on that same schedule, and we're, we're not trying to change any other dates and times to meet as a city council.
Yeah, it just, it just didn't appear as easy as...
Yeah, it's never easy as...
As easy as it was going to, you know, could be other times. So, anybody else? Councilmember Estes?
I would prefer to keep it on the 25th. I, I really don't want to do three meetings in three weeks, because we don't seem to get, it takes us time to go through the packets and stuff, and we just cram too much stuff in too short, too short of a period.
Yeah, and I was, and it's a lot for staff to, to prepare. Councilmember Applegate, Duncan, Duncan, Hersberg, Rick, Duncan, what are your thoughts?
I prefer to keep it on the 25th.
I would agree.
Okay.
I would rather keep it on the 25th also.
Yeah, it, it just got to be a little crazy, that's why I wanted to bring it back and see what everybody's opinion was, because when, when we looked at the calendars, I was like, oh, that is just, that's a lot to be moving around. It's not just a simple thing, so. All right, so, clerk, 25th, stay on the 25th? All right, Scott? You have your orders. Keep it short, huh?
I was going to suggest both on the week of the fourth, because I'll be a member.
Oh, there you go. Okay, all righty, easy peasy. All righty, does anybody, I'm going to start online this time. Councilmember Hersberg or, or Rick, do you have any agenda requests?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody in the room have an agenda request? Nope? Okay, all righty. Do we have, I don't have an executive session? No executive session tonight? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting and staying. Thank you very much.